This meeting will now come to order. Good evening. The City Council convene on Thursday, April 22, 2021, to hold a regular meeting at 7:30 PM for the purpose of discussing any and all business via in-person participation for the City Council only and remote participation for all others in accordance with Chapter 40A of the Massachusetts General Laws and Governor Baker's emergency order dated March 12, 2020. In accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the City Council will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of the members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access to proceedings in real-time via technological means. Alternative public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. Number one, this meeting is being televised live by the PBD Access Television on Comcast Channel 9 and RCM Channels 15, 16, 614, and 1161. Number two, real-time public comment during public hearings can be addressed to the PBD City Council using the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. Users may view the meeting and make a comment or question to the chair via the audio option. This meeting is being taped by the PBD Access Television and is also being recorded by our city stenographer. Let's all rise for a moment of silence. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? You've heard the motion by Councilor Gould. On the motion, all in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote. We'll now move to hearings, section of the agenda, and hearing 4A.
Mr. Chairman.
I'll now recognize Councilor Mazzulis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a late communication from Attorney Kelty requesting to continue this matter until the meeting of May 13, 2021. So moved, Mr. Chairman. Motion to receive and approve.
Thank you, Councilor Mazzulis. On the motion, all in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote. Thank you, Councilor Mazzulis. Next hearing is 4B, which is, there's a late communication, number three, and I'll recognize Chairman McGinn at this time.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to object to receiving late communication, number three.
Councilor McGinn.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. On the suspension of rules, move to receive late communication, number one. So moved.
On the motion. On the motion to receive and approve.
Yeah, I was make a second motion, Mr. President. Did we pass that on a voice vote, or?
Yes, I will do that now. So, any, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd move to continue this hearing to May 13. So moved, Mr. President.
On the motion, all in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote. Thank you, Councilor McGinn. We'll now move to hearing 4C. Councilor Sasslaw.
Thank you, Council President. Suspension of rules, motion to receive item 8C and keep it for the next public hearing.
On the motion, all in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Sasslaw.
And on suspension of rules, motion to receive item 8J, request from Attorney Kelty to continue this hearing until May 13, 2021. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote. Thank you, Councilor Sasslaw. Next agenda item is hearing 4D, Florian Quokey. Am I saying that correctly? I apologize. Which was to install an electronic sign message to an existing freestanding sign at 1 Newberry Street. Good evening and welcome back. Mr. Hutchins, thank you for coming back. Could you please provide a brief explanation of your plans on this request?
Sure. What we are requesting is to have the addition of a 30-square-foot message center to be added to the current sign, which is 70 square feet. And this will result in a conforming sign of 100 square feet that conforms to the code.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchins. Are there any members of the general public who would like to speak either in favor or in opposition of this application? Please raise your hand in the Zoom application if you'd like to speak on this matter. Are there any members of the general public who would like to speak either in favor or in opposition of this application? Please raise your hand in the Zoom application if you'd like to speak on this matter. Seeing no one, Councilor Sasslaw.
Thank you, Council President. I will support this tonight. I just had one question of the petitioner, just out of curiosity. When will the restaurant be opening?
They're hoping for a soft opening early in May.
Very good. Well, welcome to PBD and good luck. And as I said previously, I know you folks run many establishments and are looking forward to having you on PBD. Once again, I will vote to approve this. And just to, I'll make a, just to condition a special permit, which we discussed previously, previously, there'll be no outside advertising is allowed on the sign. And in addition, the petitioner has agreed, in case of emergencies, that they will allow the city to use the sign on as an ask need-be business. With that, I'd like to take a motion to close the public hearing.
On the motion, all in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Sasslaw.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the application from Florian Qui, 29 Walsh Avenue, PBD, Mass. for a special permit requesting to install an electronic message sign to an existing freestanding sign at 1 Newberry Street. PBD, Mass. is filed in accordance with Sections 11.5.2, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance with two conditions. Number one, no outside advertising will be allowed on the sign. And number, excuse, that's number one. And number two, in case of emergency, the petitioner will allow the City of PBD to utilize the sign. So moved.
You've heard the motion by Councilor Sasslaw. Any discussion? Hearing on roll call vote, please.
Councilors Gould.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Sasslaw.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you very much to the council.
Next item on the agenda is reports of committees. We'll now hear from Chairman Melville regarding the Legal Affairs Committee's meeting tonight. Chairman Melville.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The Legal Affairs Subcommittee met on Tuesday, April 20, at 6:15 PM. We had two items on the agenda. The first was requests for proposals, RFP 212 and 16 Washington Street. The second was polling location changes. And we were joined by all the members of the committee, along with Councilors Manning Martin, Councilors Welton, Councilors Charis, Councilor Mazzulis, and Councilor O'Neil, along with the mayor, His Honor the Mayor, the city solicitor, Don Kahn, Dan Doucette from the purchasing agent, along with the RFP respondent, Mr. Edward Greeley, and his attorney, Jason Panos. We were also joined by two members of the Board of Registarians and the, let me see here, I just wanted to double-check my list. And that's it. So that's who we had. I want to thank everybody for attending on an off night. The first item before the Subcommittee was a motion that was included in the packet that was submitted by Councilor McGinn regarding a, to allow the mayor, and I can, I'll read the language in a moment. We had some discussion on that with the mayor, and Mr. Greeley both agreeing that the language is consistent with the RFP and what they were reading with regards to the project. And outside of that, we, it was a unanimous vote on this particular language, and I will make the motion now. Motion is moved to authorize the mayor to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with Edward Greeley, the buyer, for the properties located at 212 and 16 Washington Street for the sum of $751,000 with a requirement that a number of items from the request for proposal documented titled "Request for Proposal Sales of Washington and Main Street Gateway Properties", February 2021, the RFP are memorialized in a manner which is binding on the buyer or the buyer's successors. These RFP items are the language in RFP Section 1, Paragraph 3, RFP Section 2, Subsection C, Paragraphes 4, 6, 7, and 8, RFP Section 2, Subsection F, Paragraph 3, RFP Section 2, Subsection G, Paragraph 1, RFP Section 4, Subsection B, Item 1. And nothing in this motion shall be construed to limit the mayor from including other RFP items. So moved.
You've heard the motion, Councilor Melville. Any discussion? Hearing on roll call vote, please.
Councilors Gould.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Sasslaw.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Councilor Melville.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. The second item was a discussion regarding updating and changing the polling locations for the City of PBD. We were joined, our city clerk gave us a brief on where we currently stand with regards to action by both the legislature and pending information from the Secretary of State's office. I can also, just to reiterate what was said the other, at the actual meeting, is next year we're also doing redistricting. So this, we could be theoretically dealing with this again next year, based on what the redistricting looks like. And there's going to be some information being passed out through the city clerk from the Secretary of State's office regarding that. The city clerk made it clear she had not received any negative feedback, but positive feedback regarding the 2020 election and the polling locations in which that election was held. The mayor reiterated that he wanted to work with the school committee regarding certain logistics part of that process. And I believe it was Councilor Turco requesting to Councilor Charis a meeting, from the ad hoc Subcommittee regarding the school committee and the City Council. It was a unanimous vote in favor. Once again, the councilors had reiterated their positive feedback to the city clerk on her work in the last election. And I will now make the motion that was approved unanimously by the Subcommittee. Be it ordered by the City Council of the City of PBD that in accordance with the provisions of the Chapter 54, Section 24 of the Massachusetts General Laws, the following shall be the polling locations in the City of PBD for all future elections effective in the year 2021. Ward 1, Precinct 1, Brown School, 150 Lynn Street. Ward 1, Precinct 2, Brown School, 150 Lynn Street. Ward 1, Precinct 3, Brown School, 150 Lynn Street. Ward 2, Precinct 1, Welch School, 50 Swanska Ave. Ward 2, Precinct 2, Welch School, 50 Swanska Ave. Ward 2, Precinct 3, Welch School, 50 Swanska Ave. Ward 3, Precinct 1, Tregian Senior Center, 75 R. Central Street. Ward 3, Precinct 2, Tregian Senior Center, 75 R. Central Street. Ward 3, Precinct 3, Tregian Senior Center, 75 R. Central Street. Ward 4, Precinct 1, Higgins Middle School, 85 Perkins Street. Ward 4, Precinct 2, Higgins Middle School, 85 Perkins Street. Ward 4, Precinct 3, Higgins Middle School, 85 Perkins Street. Ward 4, Precinct 3A, Macintosh Clubhouse, 30 Brooksbury Village Drive, first floor. Ward 5, Precinct 1, PBD Vets Memorial High School, 485 Lowell Street. Ward 5, Precinct 2, PBD Vets Memorial High School, 485 Lowell Street. Ward 5, Precinct 3, PBD Vets Memorial High School, 485 Lowell Street. Ward 6, Precinct 1, Burke School, 127 Birch Street. Ward 6, Precinct 2, Burke School, 127 Birch Street. And Ward 6, Precinct 3, Burke School, 127 Birch Street. So moved.
Point of order, Councilor McGinn. Clerk reminded me that it's three, just to make sure, it may have been hard to hear, it's 300 Brooksbury Village Drive. I believe it was, you may have said 30 just up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, three, well, it's 300 Brooksbury Village Drive, first floor.
Thank you. Clerk caught that. I missed it. On the motion, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilors Gould.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Sasslaw.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
And, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, I just wanted to recognize Judy Blodgett and Joel Brenner, who joined us, from the Board of Registarians. They've been very helpful in the past. And that is the report of the Legal Affairs Subcommittee.
Thank you very much, Chairman Melville. Great job. We'll now move to the report of the Finance Committee from Chairman McGinn. Chairman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee, the PBD City Council, met early this evening, present for the committee, with Councilors Gould, Manning Martin, Rosignol, and Turco. Also present were Councilors Welton, Mazzulis, Charis, Sasslaw, O'Neil, and Melville. There's one item on the agenda, transfer of fund request cable fund expense in amount Mr. Jengris, Director of Finance, was here to explain that this was a transfer from money collected from RCM. With that explanation, there was a motion made by Councilor Manning Martin as follows, move to approve the appropriation transfer request from receipts reserve cable fund account number 270000033017 in amount of $2,138.22 to cable fund expense account number 27000053007 in an amount of $2,138.22. Mr. President, that motion passed in committee unanimously, and I now bring that to the full council for consideration. So moved.
Thank you, Chairman McGinn. On the motion, any discussion? Hearing on roll call vote, please.
Councilors Gould.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Sasslaw.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Thank you, Chairman McGinn. We'll now move to the report from the Committee of the Whole. There were two items on the agenda. The first one was the executive session held for the AAA Northeast, the PBD City Council at all. And the other item was the in-person attendance by the general public at City Hall meetings. All councilors were present for the meeting tonight. The executive session, we met, and as a group, we have decided to move forward with a motion. And at this time, I will read it in its entirety. This time, I would read the motion that was approved in the executive session, which would be that the City Council grant a special permit from AAA, based on an application from AAA Northeast, 110 Royal Little Drive, Providence, Rhode Island, for a special permit seeking to operate a trucking terminal with truck repair and maintenance services with no outdoor storage at 7 Lakeland Drive. PBD, Mass. is filed in accordance with Section 6.64B, comma, 6.1, comma, 11, comma, 12, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. You've heard the motion. Any discussion? Hearing on roll call vote, please.
Councilors Gould.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Sasslaw.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Motion carries 9 to 0.
Thank you. The second item was a discussion of returning and allowing to, excuse me, returning to in-person public participation at City Hall for City Council meetings. And we ran through, kind of, had discussion points regarding safety, attendees for all attendees, and also how we'll run the meeting. We are going to be working with the City House, City Hall personnel to make sure that we have areas designated for seating, and also so that people can know where they can properly socially distance from parties who are not with them or part of their family members. And we have decided, the council voted unanimously to have our first public, our meeting with first public participation scheduled for Thursday, May 13, 2021. We will continue at this time to have a hybrid model of public participation, which will include those attending the meeting in person, general public, as well as through the Zoom meeting application. So we'll try to continue with the Governor's order, still in effect, allow that participation for people to have greater involvement if they choose so. So at this time, I'd accept a motion to, I guess, sorry. So we voted unanimously for the plan, so at this time, I'd make a motion that this body move to approve that the first meeting for public participation will be held on Thursday, May 13, 2021, with requirements for the City Hall access to comply with all current regulations in place in terms of entering on the handicapped accessible entrance on Chestnut Street and check-in with City Hall security staff, cell screening for any COVID-19 symptoms checklist, and as well as providing contact information in the event that we need to contact trace individuals due to COVID or any other illness that was possibly occurred in this building. The second part will be safety protocols for all attendees. Face masks must be worn by all attendees at all times. Social distancing will be required, six feet physical distance between attendees, as well as seating arrangements. Hand sanitizer will be available. We will also establish the microphone cleaning and disinfecting between participants. It is thought that we will have seating throughout this hall, but the majority of it will be in the upper balcony, although there will be allowances for people who may not be able to go up there due to lack of elevator and also for any other conditions. But we just want to make sure that everyone is able to attend the hearing in a safe manner. On the motion, any further discussion? Hearing on roll call vote, please.
Councilors Gould.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Sasslaw.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Thank you. We now would move to motions, orders, and resolutions, which we are going to, but I want to just step out of order for once, one moment to address unfinished business from the preceding meeting and ask Councilor Turco to comment. Councilor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you all know, I presented a resolution on behalf of the Teamsters Union, and due to the great advice given to me by one of my colleagues, I did look further into this with the Ethics Commission. And since I am a long-term, a longtime member of the Teamsters Local 25, I should not have proceeded in that manner. So I'm going to move to withdraw my motion, and you'll later see that this was resubmitted directly from the Teamsters Union, as it should have been initially. But again, thank you to my colleague for the advice, and move to rescind item number 10.
Thank you, Councilor Turco. On the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Now moved back to motions, orders, and resolutions. Thank you for your patience, Councilor Gould.
None, Mr. President. Thank you. Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Gould. Councilor Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the suspension of the rules, motion to receive item 7A. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the suspension of the rules, motion to receive item 7B, transfer of funds and refer to finance. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the suspension of the rules, motion to receive item 9A, utility contractors license for Rose City Construction Company, 130 King Philip Street, Johnston, Rhode Island. All papers being in order. So moved.
On the motion to receive and approve, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Manning Martin.
No further motions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Manning Martin. Councilor Sasslaw.
Thank you, Council President. On the suspensions of rules, motion to receive item 8F.
On the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Sasslaw.
Yes. On the suspension of rules, motion to receive item 8H.
On the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Sasslaw.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that the Department of Public Services please inspect the catchpatience and sewer covers and lines at 29 Downing Road so that there is no more water backup. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Sasslaw.
Thank you. And I'd just like to, just for the community as a whole, tomorrow night, PBD, Tanner's varsity football game will be playing their final home game against our traditional Thanksgiving opponent, Saugus. I just want to give a shout-out to everyone, from the coaches, to the school committee, to the principal, to make it happen this year. I know it meant a lot to the team, to everybody, and a lot of this community obviously does support all youth sports. And I just want to invite everyone to either come down, if you are allowed via the COVID rules, but most likely you can certainly tune in to local cable access. And once again, I want to congratulate Coach Benton Court and his staff on a very successful season, and wish the seniors the best of luck as they move on from PBD High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Sasslaw. Well said. Councilor Welton.
Thank you, Mr. President. No motions this evening, but I did want to first recognize the Department of Public Works for their outstanding efforts to get all of those stop signs put up in Boulderwood. If you have an opportunity to drive through there, you will now see that all of the signs are up and that the neighborhood is fully accessible and has the stop signs where they needed. Secondly, I wanted to thank many of my fellow councilors and many of our community members who participated despite the bad weather in the PBD Pride Cleanup Day on Saturday. I was very pleased to see so much participation and really kind of underscored the pride that our community has. However, I'd be remiss to say if I wasn't pretty disgusted with some of the amount of trash that was left throughout our city. And would just encourage any of our community members that are listening, if, you know, you could do your part to keep our city clean, it would be very much appreciated. I don't think anyone should have to remove a 200-pound TV from Brown's Pond anytime in the future. So just my little public service announcement, and a special... the future. So just my little public service announcement, and a special thank you to John Swanson, PBD resident, for his help with removing said TV. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Welton. Counsel Sharrest?
Thank you, Counsel President. I'd like to make a motion to accept and approve item 8G, please.
On the motion, Counsel Turco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll throw you to the council, if you'd allow me two minutes on this motion. And thank you for, to Counsel Sharrest for receiving it. And I just, I wanted to just explain, I want to say thank you all for reading this and taking the time to look at it. But I wanted to further explain that I read it maybe a day before you guys got it, before I submitted it to you guys initially. And several things struck me with it. And the primary thing that really struck me is the Centennial Office Park and how important it is to this community. And, you know, I kind of looked back at a few things. I looked back at some of the changes that were made to the office park. I think, you know, years ago, I think maybe only Counsel Manning Martin and Counsel Gould were on the council then, where they added uses to the, allowed uses in the park. And that was to kind of change the direction of the park from, from an industrial park to an office park. And I don't want to speak on either of your behest, but I think that's what, you had a vision for the way you wanted to see the park. And I think we've done pretty well there up until this point. We've opened some, some good businesses. We've had Seva Logistics, DHL, Bertolino Foods, Justin Time Cafe, First Avenue Salon, Expedite is International. Some of those are, you know, trucking companies. Some of those are local businessmen. All of those companies that I mentioned have hired locally and have hired full-time and have given our residents preference and good job opportunities. When I looked, when I thought further into it, I kept this number, keeps popping into my head, and it's from the Housing Production Report, when it was in the clearest day that we went from 4.9% to 9.8% in the poverty level in the city. And you ask yourself, why? You know, why did that happen? And the only thing that I can come up with is good jobs in the city. And we're accepting a lot of businesses into the city, and that's great. But I think we need to be more cognizant of who's employing our citizens and how we bring up the pay scales of people within the city. I don't know the answers to that. It's the thing that struck me from this resolution is that regardless of who submitted it, or how it was submitted, or what the purposes are behind it, we as a council, I think, really need to form a committee to kind of look into how we better Centennial Office Park, how we bring more indifferent businesses. I don't think anybody wants it to be just a truck stop, and that's it. I think it goes totally against what you guys did, you know, a decade ago. So I'm hopeful that we do, although it's a recommendation, there's nothing binding, I'm hoping that we do set up a committee with residents, with co-counselors, with businesses within the office park, to see the direction that this place is going, because I think it's that important to this city. Our other important aspect was the mall. And, you know, fortunately, this council had the foresight to approve the housing overlay at the mall, because we saw the direction the mall was going. But now we have to look at the direction the office park is going. And hopefully, we can have some say-so and some input, because I drive through it, I drive by it every day, all day. You know where I live. I see that it's, it's not at its peak. It's not where it should be. It's not where it could be. So that's why I felt this ordinance was important. Additionally, it brought me back to 2015, when I first ran in Ward 1, and Fred Berry said to me, "Do you tell everybody you're in a labor union?" And I said, "I don't." I said, "I don't even bring it up." And he said, "Well, you need to." He said, "Because GE built South Peabody." He said, "The unions of GE and the salaries created by GE build most of the houses in South Peabody." And I think Counsel Gould can probably attest to that, that they did contribute to a good living for a lot of people. And that's, you know, again, just an example of a good business that came here and supported the city and did a lot for its residents. So that's the direction I'd like to see, and that's why I presented the motion originally. Fortunately, the Teamsters resubmitted it, you know, through themselves. And, you know, I'd appreciate the support.
Thank you, Counsel Turco. On the motion, Counsel Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Turco, you're spot on about good jobs for people that work hard and good pay. And it's been the lifeblood of the North Shore. It really has. And there are areas in the city that need to, we need to take a hard look at. And I would be willing to sit on any committee that you think is necessary. Thank you. Thank you for caring enough about it and bringing it to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Gould. Counsel Mazzullis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor Turco, I like your, I don't really quite understand where you were going with it, but I do like what, what you were talking about. And I would also join Counsel Gould and be honored to be on a committee like that. Now, I don't want to talk like there's old Jim Mazzullis, like he's going back in time again. But, you know, we're talking about the industrial park. I remember when the industrial park was built. I remember the purpose of the industrial park. It was to create jobs, to create housing, and that's what happened. That's how West Peabody was built. They sewed all of West Peabody. They took the land for the industrial park for, to make, they took it from the piggeries and the farmers to, to create an industrial park, to create all these jobs, and that's how Peabody grew. And the reason I like what you're talking about is we were fortunate enough at the time to have the foresight and have city leaders that could see ahead on what's going on. The tanneries were going out, and everybody saw it. And that was a vision that I'd like to see this council come up with, because the city of Peabody does need a vision, okay? We have great leaders in this city. And you're all sitting in this room, and it's up to us to, to make that decision on how the city is going to go. Counselor, I didn't really know where you were going with your, with your motion. But I, but I like what we're talking about. And as I said, I'd like to join you, and thank you for bringing it up. So moved, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mazzullis. Any other further discussion? Counsel Welton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to also thank Counsel Turco for, for his points. I think, obviously, with so much of the industrial park being in Ward 1, it's an important issue for, for us, for our constituents. And I think there's a real opportunity there. As I drive through there almost every day, too, I can't tell you the number of, you know, for lease or for sale signs that you see there. And you just wonder, how can we attract more of these businesses to Peabody? How can we continue to, you know, capitalize on the commercial rate for our tax base as well? So I think it behooves not only those of us in South Peabody, and those of us that are connected to the industrial park, but all of us as city leaders to really take a hard look. Obviously, Counsel Turco, you know, I'm more than happy to support in any capacity. And I think as we do that, it's important for us to underscore the necessity that we work hard with any potential employers that are coming in to ensure that they're paying a livable wage, that they're being proactive community members, and that we're working with them to create, you know, a much stronger city and the type of city that we all want to be a part of and play a leadership role in. So thank you, Counsel Turco, for bringing that up. And I'd be happy to support all of those efforts.
Any other councils want to speak on the motion, which is from Counsel Sharrest to receive item 8G? Counsel Sharrest?
Yeah, just to receive and approve, if that needs to be a roll call.
Counsel Sharrest, if, just if you could move your microphone closer. It actually, if you're going to request that this resolution be filed on behalf of the council, you must read it. So do you have it in front of you?
Thank you, Council President. It's my request to attach the resolution offered by the next PBD City Council meeting, resolution for a fair and full employment opportunities at Amazon. This resolution is asking Amazon to meet and exceed community standards for its future workforce in any distribution warehouse and event Amazons will expand into the city of Peabody. This will apply to Amazon Delivery Network as well. Teamsters Local 25 represents UPS and DHL, and these companies best compare to what Amazon is looking to do with the expansion of e-commerce network. Similar resolutions have passed unanimously in cities of Boston, Cambridge, Somerville, Medford, Baldwin, Revere, Chelsea, Lynn, and the resolutions-
Counsel Sharrest, I apologize. I just want to make sure that the resolution was attached to 8G. So if that's what you are going to put in order for the council, I just want to make sure that it's on the last two pages to read that. I just wanted to, so I didn't interrupt, but that-
So moved.
The resolution is, is on the last part of it, okay?
Correct. I stand corrected. So I'll be corrected. In the further resolution, the prior to any expansion in city Peabody and Amazon operations meet and exceed the current community standards set by existing commerce delivery network. This will include the deliveries of the direct employees of Amazon and not independent contractors. Amazon will ensure that all employed delivery drivers pass the most rigorous background checks, including query checks and complete federal dot drug testing guidelines. Amazon will only hire competitive and safe drivers, and will maintain the utmost professional conduct in their day-to-day operations in the neighborhood of the city of Peabody. Is there any, referred to Counsel Turco, that, is there anything else that I left out?
Good. Thank you, Counsel. Just to read it from the beginning, resolution for fair and full employment opportunities at Amazon, whereas Amazon has targeted the city of Peabody for expansion of its e-commerce network, and whereas COVID-19 has had a devastating impact in the health, safety, and well-being of the residents of the city of Peabody, and whereas state and local guidelines to prevent the spread and curtail transmission of the coronavirus have had a devastating economic impact on local retail establishments in the city of Peabody, had not changed the retail options for the residents of the city of Peabody, and whereas preventative measures put in place to combat COVID-19, and whereas existing retail e-commerce delivery networks currently operate in the city of Peabody and set community standards for family sustaining wages, benefits including but not limited to quality health insurance and secure retirement, and whereas these retail and commerce delivery options coexist in Peabody's diverse neighborhoods while adding value to the fabric of the community, including offering good careers for Peabody residents to provide for their families, and whereas existing e-commerce delivery options have aptly served the residents of the city of Peabody throughout the COVID-19 pandemic while maintaining the highest of standards for its essential workforce, not, now therefore be it the resolved, the PBD City Council hereby assembled encourages Amazon to sit down with the PBD community, included but not limited to representatives of the International Brotherhood of Teamsters Local 25, locally impacted neighborhood groups, local residents, and other interested parties and elected officials, to discuss how Amazon can expand delivery operations, warehouses, and fulfillment centers in a way that it is beneficial to the city of Peabody and its residents, guaranteeing sustainable growth for the city and helping to ensure that fair and equitable employment standards are maintained for all e-commerce delivery networks throughout the city of Peabody. And Counsel Sharrest had already read the last paragraph. So moved. Back to Counsel Sharrest.
Thank you, Counsel Turco.
You've heard the motion for it to be resolved as read into the record. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Sharrest.
Thank you, Counsel President. Just a point of information, this April 28, Wednesday, 6:30 to 7:30, there's going to be a presentation at James G. Echo Campus Hub. PBD Access Channel will be covering it. Also, PBD Access Television's social media site will also be covering this informational webinar. Just so people know, this is a continuing phase from James Street Park down to the Higgins on trails, walking trails, and cleaning up, making it more pedestrian-friendly. Just so let people know that. I also will be setting a meeting up of the ad hoc committee of city, city council and schools to discuss the polling places, as was suggested. I would ask Counselor Turco and Welton to reach out to me and let me know what their available dates are in the next couple of weeks. I also like to thank the residents of the city, especially the residents of Ward 4, helping out last Saturday, like Counsel Welton said, in the pouring rain, very cold day, cleaning up the numerous areas throughout the city. It is amazing how much trash builds up, and I know we weren't able to do it last year. But this asks, again, people to be conscious of what they're disposing, and including their trash pickup days and how they're putting their trash out on windy days and such. I do want to recognize our honorable ambassador to Peabody, Cheryl Malad, who's always been there for any events, taking pictures of this Saturday, and including helping picking up many of the trash that was in the area of Ward 4. So that would be all, but just want to thank her very much again for taking as many pictures as she could.
Thank you, Counsel Sharrest. Counsel McGinn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Suspension of the rules moved to receive item 8B. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel McGinn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Do you want me to take 8I on your behalf?
If you would, please. Thank you.
And would, do you want that referred to the committee of the whole? Is that correct?
That would go to the Ad Hoc Committee on Aggregate Industries, Chairman Melville. Thank you.
Yep. So under suspension of the rules, moved to receive item 8I and refer to the committee, the ad hoc committee on aggregate. So moved.
Point of order, I screwed up for some reason, and it should have been committee of the whole. So would you be agreeable to amend your original amendment, your motion back to what it should have been?
It's interesting, Mr. President. You corrected me on that the last time. So that's why I, but yes, I will amend the motion to refer to the committee of the whole. So moved.
Well done, Counsel McGinn. On the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel McGinn?
Thank you, Mr. President. No further motions.
Thank you, Counsel McGinn. Counsel Mazzullis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under suspension of the rules, I'd like to receive item 8A. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
On the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Mazzullis?
Also, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a co-motion with Counsel Gould and myself to have public services install a stop sign at the intersection of Colonial Road and Abington Ave. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
On the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Mazzullis?
Also, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a request to ask public services to install a no parking sign from here to corner, at the corners of Driscoll Street and Tremont Street. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
On the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Mazzullis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no further motions.
Thank you, Counsel Mazzullis. Counsel Turco?
No motions, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Turco. Counsel Rozignol?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no motions, orders, or resolutions. Just a point of information and a reminder that on May 13, at 7 o'clock in the morning, the PBD Area Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Rotary, we will be having their annual golf tournament for scholarships. So I just wanted to let anybody know that-
So I just wanted to let anybody know that there's a golfer out there that you can sign up, and it is May 13th, which is actually our next council meeting. Thank you. Nothing further.
Thank you, Counsel Rozignol.
I have no motions this evening. Move to receive, under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8E, and I believe that's a legal, that would go to legal affairs. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
And you said 8C and D as well? Okay. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8C and item 8D, and forward those to the respective special permit hearing. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Melville.
Nothing further this evening. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
I have no motions, orders, or resolutions, but I did want to let people know that on Saturday, May 1st, starting at 10:00 a.m., running till 3 o'clock, two PBD High School seniors have, they're going to be hosting, if you will, a Mental Health Matters 5K Walk, and it's $15 for each participant, and this money's all going to support mental health in the community. And it's two seniors doing a great job. The information would be available, it's all over Facebook. Of course, I'm not very technology savvy, but there is tickets available through Eventbrite.com, Mental Health Matters 5K Walk tickets, so I just wanted to mention that. I now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, move to receive and approve, all papers being in order, item 9B, Junk Dealer's License Renewal for 2021, Long's Jewelers, 35 Cross Street. So moved.
Thank you for that catch, Counsel Melville. On the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Mr. President, move to adjourn. Motion adjourned. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. This meeting is now adjourned.